Good evening. Welcome and thank you to this, thank you for your attendance or your viewing of the special meeting of the Board of Education of March 30th, 2015. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is Audience Communications. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the board tonight?
Yes, I will.
Welcome.
Thank you.
My name's Johnny Quappis and this is the first one I've ever attended. I've been living here in Livonia since my wife and I moved in in 1974. And we had two girls that went through the Livonia School System and they're both gone on education very well, master's programs through state and everything. One's a practicing attorney and everything else. So it was, was a big part of the reason we moved here to begin with because of account of the school systems. We do value the education and everything that, you know, Livonia has put forth. But like everything else, you know, people are downsizing. I worked in General Motors for 45 years and believe me, I know about downsizing. And the situation now where I'm here to talk a little bit about the Washington School Site. And I mean, both our girls went there back in the days of Mrs. Larmen. If it ever is named a park, I hope it's named after her. She is a very, very excellent principal. But, and that's really what we'd like to see. We'd like to see, you know, we're part of the group there. I don't know where everybody is tonight, but we just like to keep it a park. We don't, I don't think we need any more subdivisions. I don't really want any apartments there. And we'd just like to see that it's a multi-use, some sort of park or, you know, with the leagues and practices. I mean, our girls started out with T-ball and everything else. And I know we don't have the student population that we used to have back in the days when we moved in here, but I still think for that part of the city and everything else that we'd like to see, I just don't want to see it sold and, and we'd just like to keep it into a park area.
Okay.
That's at all possible. That's pretty much what I have to say. And I guess, thank you for my opportunity.
Thank you very much.
You can just give me the.
Okay, sure.
And for the benefit of those who, who may be new to Board of Education meetings, the Audience Communication Period is a time for the board to listen to community comments. It's not a time for us to engage in a question and answer back and forth, but we will take your comments under consideration when this item comes up on the agenda at the next time. So thank you for sharing with us this evening.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Item Three, Approval of Bids for Testing and Balancing and Visual Display. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the testing and balancing and visual display boards for the Phase Two Elementary School construction projects in the amount of $158,731 and a contingency budget of $15,593 for a total amount of $174,324. And authorize Superintendent Randy Leepa to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of Livonia Public Schools' Board of Education with the contractors on the attached list of contractors awarded bids from McCarthy and Smith Incorporated.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And if I may make a correction in the title that I, that I gave, I only gave a partial title. The, the full title of this item is Approval of Bids for Testing and Balancing and Visual Display Boards at Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt Elementary Schools on the 2013 Bond. Dr. Leepa, would you like to, or I'm sorry, it's, Mrs. Abby?
Either way, thank you very much. We are bringing several 2013 bond items tonight for approval from the Board of Education. And these items were discussed at our Building and Site Committee meeting last week. Mr. Palterio was there to go into detail on the bid process and the process for vetting the contractors that we'll ask you to award tonight. Mr. Terrio is here again. I'm happy to have him in the house. And I just wanted to mention on this particular bid, this first bid, if you recall, we already awarded the construction for these Phase Two Elementary School projects. We had two bids that we did not feel we had enough coverage on. We extended the bid timeline. So we're bringing those two for you tonight. So what you're going to see in your packet tonight is both, but, not the budget, but the detail for the construction contingency and CM fees for just these two projects. And then on the reverse side of that budget, you have the total budget for the entire three elementary schools and the variance, the amount we're under budget in total. And you got that in your packet last, in your binder last time, but I just wanted you to have both pieces of it this time. The amount for just these two projects and then the amount in total for those three schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul Terrio from Plant Moran Cressa.
Thank you.
My apologies. I was upstairs working and forgot that this was a special board meeting. I was expecting a big presentation by somebody to stall for me for a little bit.
We stalled adequately enough for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So the first one is, Lisa mentioned, you've seen all this stuff before last Monday. These are really just two rebids for Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt. And you'll see in Section A, there is a letter just kind of detailing that. The total project award is $174,323. And if you look at these three projects overall, we're really sitting pretty good. We're about $571,000 under budget on these three construction projects, including all the soft costs and contingency budgets. So I think that's something we should be very happy with and proud of. And really, we're really just looking for Sig Jan Products, who is doing the visual display boards, and then International Test and Balance, who'd be doing the testing and balancing at these, these three buildings. So I've worked with both of those firms many times and I'm very confident they can handle the work, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Paul, can you help me understand the process from when you do a bid opening and then you go in and, and I know it's extensive work and I understand that.
Sure.
But what's the process? Once you figure out who you're going to recommend, once you do that, what do you do after that?
So maybe just a half a step back, but.
Okay.
Once the bids are opened up, really the CMs and the architects play a key role in going through and vetting out all those contractors. So they really sit down with each one of them by bid division. They'll sit down with the low electric, electrical bid, the low mechanical bid, and go through the drawings with them page by page. Do you have all this scope of work to make sure that everything is included? They haven't missed anything? They also go through their financial statements, their manpower schedules to make sure they have the capabilities to complete the job, call references, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes I sit in on those, sometimes I don't. Depends on how critical or big they are. And there's just time constraints on all of it, obviously. But once that happens and they present all their recommendations to me, I basically go through, double-check all the math, make sure I'm aware of what the budgets are, make sure that we compare things apples to apples, put all these documents together, the summary letter, the summary of costs that details the budget. In the meantime, while that's going on, I'm also negotiating the final CM fees and costs with the construction managers because obviously, two years ago when we bid out those contracts, we didn't know exactly how we were going to phase things, whether we'd do three buildings a year, or four buildings a year, or five, or six. So we have to sit down and kind of go through that and I make sure that I'm happy with how those numbers came in. And Ms. Abby, obviously, is an integral part of that as well, checking to make sure that we're, you know, on, on track with that. So it's really a team effort between the CMs, the architects, myself, and the administration team. So the other thing we do is, is go through the bids so that when we get an award recommendation from McCarthy and Smith per se, we'll actually go back and check the bids to make sure the number is the same. And so really, it's a lot of ticking and tying to make sure that the recommendations are appropriate, that the budget is capable of handling it, and that everything is in order. So sometimes we'll have second-low bidders that may come in that they're not too happy that they were the second-low bidder and they want to plead their case, or a low bidder that we are not recommending that may not be happy with that. So we'll have to deal with that. In fact, I spent half the day today dealing with a couple of those issues. So it does happen from time to time, but it hasn't been too bad, thankfully. So it is really, you know, because we're awarding when we are and because we want to get these contracts out as fast as possible, the CMs and the architects are very crunched for time, which leaves me very little time at the end to get everything wrapped up and put together and out. So February and March are almost over and I'll be happy when they are, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay. So it sounds like an incredible amount of detail work and we're grateful that you are double and triple checking and not just taking the first run through at something. And, and we do know that, we knew from, from several months ago that this was going to be a pretty intense time for you and for the board to get all these out, but we appreciate the due diligence that you do before and after the recommendations.
Yep. And if I do by chance miss something, I know Dr. Leepa or one of the board members will catch it before we come to tonight. So that's great.
All righty. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Four, Approval of Moving Bids for Phase Two Schools in the 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase Two Move Management bids for the amount of $250,116 and a contingency budget amount of $50,023 for a total amount of $301,139 and authorize the Superintendent Randy Leepa to negotiate and execute final contract on behalf of Livonia Public Schools' Board of Education with the contractor on the attached document from Plant Moran Cressa.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mrs. Abby, would you like to address this item?
Sure. Just very quickly, and I, and I don't know if Paul wants to add anything, but this is the move management this summer for furniture and curriculum and all the odds and ends in the schools for all six schools for this summer. So we have one company doing all six schools for this summer. You might recall that we are bidding the IT move management separately and we'll be bringing that back to you later in the spring, probably in May. That bid has just gone out. So we expect that one due later in April. And I think that is almost the end of our bids. There'll be a couple stragglers, but other than that, we should have most of them done by then. And this, you'll look, notice we did bring this to you last week and we have the move management budgets and the variances. And I don't know, Mr. Terrio, if you would like to add anything?
No, just that this year we did, as Ms. Abby mentioned, split the IT move separate from the move. We had some issues last year and we didn't want to relive that again. So we wanted to bid that out separately, which is why it's going to come to you in May rather than now. But we thought it was the prudent thing to do and we're hoping we'll get better coverage and more attention from the people that actually specialize in IT moves that way. So we did have some concerns initially with having only one move management company rather than two like we had last year, especially when you had the high school or half the high school, as that's phased over two years. But we did meet with premier relocations and put them through the wringer pretty good. In fact, they called me last week wondering what was going on to make sure that they're going to get these because they're now looking at other bids that are coming up and they want to make sure they keep the manpower focused on our projects. So I told them, sit tight till Monday. I'll let you know Tuesday morning. So, so I think these guys are ready to go and they do a ton of schoolwork. I've worked with them before and they do a great job. So we're excited.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments by board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Paul, can you tell us why the contingency is so high on this one?
Yeah, I think it's 20% is what it should be.
Yeah.
That's what we did last year is we had 20% on the move. Yeah, there's just, they're not very big contracts. And I can tell you right now that I'm going to have to call them up probably just before school gets out and say, hey, do you guys want to come out early and move some things just to relieve some pressure off the teachers? And probably when the teachers come back, we're going to have to do the same thing. We put some hours in their bid, but, you know, we don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish with regard to getting school emptied and then started again. So I'm assuming we're going to have to do a little bit of extra work there. So that's really what the money's for.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And again, Mr. Terrio, the contingency is that is not used, that is kept by Livonia Public Schools?
Exactly. And if you recall, last year, we did not use several hundred thousand dollars worth of that.
Right, right. So, and, and the board is well aware of that, but I want to make sure the public is aware of that. That's, that's money that, that we, we have budgeted in there in case it is needed. And if it's not, then we'll use it for other bond things coming down the road.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Five, the Approval of Bid Results for Construction at Franklin High School from the 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
Mrs. Burton.
Yes, Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Franklin High School construction project for the amount of $19,012,73 and a contingency budget amounts of $1,440,000 for a total amount of $20,452,73 and authorize Superintendent Randy Leepa to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of Livonia Public Schools' School District, District's Board of Education with contractors on the attached list of contractors awarded bids from the George W. Ock Company.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Abby, would you like to?
Thank you again very much. Very excited this evening to be bringing forward the Franklin High School renovation and new auditorium project. This is the first of our three high schools. Very excited to be getting started on this project as early as probably the next couple of weeks during the spring break. And this will be a two-year project. Phase One of this project will start this summer and I'll, we'll get about half of the work done, half of the building renovated, start on some of the work on the auditorium, and then finish up the next year. So this award is for almost the entire project. I think Mr. Terrio can remind me, but there were two bids that we didn't open and again, that we've extended that we'll be bringing back to the board in May. But with this amount, this, this is the authorization for the whole project. We did have an opportunity to discuss this in detail at the committee meeting. I did want to just point out a couple of things in the budgetary information on this resolution this evening. This, as we discussed last week in detail regarding the budget for Franklin High School, we will be doing most of this through the 2013 bond. And then we will also be authorized up to $2.9 million of sinking fund as well. And Dr. Leepa might want to add to this, but you might recall what we talked about specifically was both the mechanical system and the exterior entrance way and entrance and exit way to the high school. We're not part of the original bond scope, but as we started to get into the work, we said it made much more sense for us while we're in, from financially and from a work standpoint, once we're in the middle of this project, it makes much more sense for us to get this work done. You might recall, the board will recall that we had talked about changing the entrance. You might recall, the board will recall, that we had talked about changing the entrance ways to the high schools years ago, and had planned on doing some studies, and then came forward with the bond, so we kind of put a hold on that until we had our design drawings for the bond. So, we are bringing that back along with, again, the mechanical equipment. And we do feel that it makes the most sense at this time to get all of that work done. We feel like we have enough resources, not only to finish this project as well, but as we had that discussion, we talked about, well, we have two more high schools, so how would that affect our other two high schools? And as we discussed, we looked at that in detail, and we do feel we have sufficient funds in our owner's contingency, which is again what we were just talking about. Tonight, you saw half a million dollars just from our Phase 2 elementary schools go back into the owner contingency. And depending on what happens with the sale of the second series of the bond, we could be up to $8 million in owner's contingency. Of course, we'll keep you up to date on that, but we do feel like there are sufficient monies within the bond and within our sinking fund to move forward on this project and the balance of our bond projects as well.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Terrio?
Yeah, so, these bids came in on March 12th, so to our earlier discussion, a pretty small window to get everything ready for last Monday, extremely small. These bids totaled $20.45 million, and as Ms. Abbey mentioned, there are two scopes of work that we're not bringing tonight. One is the metal panel system. We did receive two bids on that, but one of the bidders had an alternate system. We wanted some time to vet that out, get some samples, make sure that we give it its due process before we bring that recommendation. And then the other system was the lifts. We only had one bid on the lift, which is essentially like an elevator or a small elevator, that we're going to put back out on the street and bring to you in May. So, that's not a timing-critical issue or schedule-critical issue, so we have time on that. And then, as Ms. Abbey mentioned, this project started off with an original budget of about 15.3. We adjusted it to 18.3, and we were hopeful that we'd be able to meet that budget, but given the market conditions and the timing and some other factors, this project is over budget, and we're looking to accommodate that through the sinking fund and the contingency money that we've set aside through previous savings on last year's projects and some projects, one of which we presented just a few minutes ago. So, I think overall, we are in good shape, and we certainly wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't think that we could deal with this within the scope of the bond, so.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
I do have one comment. As I had stated in the previous committee of the whole meeting, a member of my family's company is a supplier to some of the mechanical contractors listed on this document, so therefore, I will be abstaining from all discussion and voting on this item. Because this company is a subcontractor and does not bid directly to LPS, I have been advised that I do not have to abstain, but I am doing so in order to be completely transparent. To understand the perspective, the company was asked to quote approximately $9,000 on over $20 million in mechanical work on this project. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Abstain.
Motion carries, sorry.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Approval of Bid Results for Classroom AV Projectors from the 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to purchase classroom audiovisual AV projectors from VSC Inc., Novi, Michigan, for the amount of $1,669,632 and a contingency budget amount of $166,963 for a total cost of $1,836,595. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Laura. Ms. Abbey and Mrs. Alice, are you both going to be addressing us tonight?
You have lots of people on these four items. We are bringing four technology items this evening from the 2013 bond. We have Paul and Rob from Barton Mallow behind me, prepared to answer questions. You remember that Barton Mallow is our tech design firm that has helped us all along get ready for all of our technology purchases from the very beginning, since we passed the 2013 bond. That was one of the first things that we actually hired to get us started on getting ready for technology purchases. And then, Paul Terrio from Cressa is turning the microphone over to Matt Linder from Plant Moran Cressa, he's on the technology side of the house for Plant Moran Cressa, but also acts as our owner's representative. So, with that, Matt, I think I'm turning that over to you. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So, this is the bid for Classroom AV, the Classroom Projectors, district-wide, to get the projection units into the classrooms, tie into the sound amplification systems that were installed last summer, going and phasing with the construction, doing Phases 2 and 1, and then following construction after that. This is to a good vendor that we have worked with in the past, no real concerns over the recommendation of VSC. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All righty. Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Matt, I'm assuming this is district-wide?
Yes, that is correct.
Because we're dealing so much with specific other items tonight?
Absolutely. So, this will start with the Phase 2 and Phase 1 buildings this summer, and then follow the construction schedule for the remainder of the district.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments by board members? No? That was a quick one. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton, President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Approval of Bid Results for Structured Cabling from the 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
President Johnson?
President Burton?
We just can't get that out of our system.
I didn't even notice. Yes, Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to purchase structured cabling from Amcon Telecommunication Incorporated, White Lake, Michigan, for the amount of $908,000 and a contingency budget of $90,800 for the total cost of $998,800.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Alice and Mrs. Abbey. One of the two of you are going to address the item, I understand.
You know what, I'll turn the mic over to Mrs. Alice.
All righty.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn the mic over.
Hey, it's like hot potato with the mic tonight, huh?
There we go. So, I've got the mic. So, this is the contract for the balance of the low voltage data cabling to support communications infrastructure throughout the district for the remainder of the bond. Feel like we've got good pricing from a good vendor here. This is Amcom, who did the majority of the data cabling in the first-phase buildings. So, we've got a vendor that we know that we're comfortable with and already is very familiar with your district. We think this one just makes sense.
All righty. Thank you. Any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. Bonnefield, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Can you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 8, Approval of Bid Results for Servers and Storage from the 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to contract Sentinel Technologies, Inc., at a cost of $52,054, including contingency, to design an integrated information technology data server and storage solution, and further to purchase servers and storage equipment through Sentinel Technologies at an educational list price discount as indicated on the attached bid tabulation.
Do we have support for this item?
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mrs. Abbey.
Thank you very much. We are very excited about this. You recall, we did talk about this at our committee meeting last week, and we are hiring Sentinel to help us design a solution for all of our servers and storage throughout the district. What we talked about last time, I'll just remind the board, is that we have a, in addition to these design costs that we're asking you to approve tonight, we also have set aside in our budget $900,000 for equipment purchases. And you'll recall that as part of the bid process, we asked these vendors to give us their best discount off of the educational list price. So, the purchases that we'll make for equipment would go to an educational list price, like if it was Apple or some other equipment or vendor, once we decide what that solution is. So, we did provide that bid tabulation in the package for you this evening. Sentinel, the company that we're recommending, has provided the best discount off of the educational list price. So, you see that one is for 50% and the other for 59% between the servers and storage. And these are purchases that, once we do have a design solution, what does it look like? How are we going to do servers and storage across the entire district with the bond project? We will bring the equipment recommendations to the Board of Education. So, right now, you're just approving the design, you're approving that we're going to use Sentinel's list price discount, but the actual equipment that we need, we will bring back to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that makes sense, and if not, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty.
So, one brief point of clarification of that, $47,000 on the initial contract for services is design and implementation of what the eventual design solution is. The reason for bidding it out this way is so that we can get, it's really tied to the video surveillance solution. We know we're going to have significant data storage needs related to that video surveillance solution. We could very easily design and bid out a server and data storage solution for everything outside of video surveillance, get one solution in, and then if we bid that second solution out separately, we run the risk of looking at disparate solutions. You'd have servers and storage for all of your non-video surveillance-related needs, and then potentially a different solution. This allows us to get one integrated server farm, one integrated data storage solution, all designed by the same vendor that's going to implement it. And the discounts that we got on this is on good Tier 1 manufacturer equipment. We're talking about Cisco servers and EMC data storage solutions, good discounts off of good prices from a good vendor. This is what made the most sense based on the timing of the servers and storage and the video surveillance RFPs.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? No? All righty. Thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 9, Approval of Bid Results for Video Surveillance from the 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to purchase equipment for video surveillance from Sentinel Technologies Incorporated, Ann Arbor, Michigan, for the amount of $638,97 and a contingency budget amount of $63,810 for a total cost of $701,907.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abbey?
Thank you again. Our last item for technology this evening is for cameras. These are cameras district-wide that will go into our schools, and other than catching up with Phase 1 and 2, they will be installed during or following the construction process for the remainder of our schools.
Okay, all righty.
And I don't know if Matt has any additional comments?
I think the only additional comment I would add is that due to the pricing that we got and the proposals on this one, we were able to take one of the alternates that we put into the bid to increase the resolution on the interior cameras to 5 megapixels from the base bit of 1 megapixel. Basically means you're going to get a much better image at a much farther distance if you do need to identify someone from the recorded video. So, I think that's definitely a good thing and worth mentioning.
Okay. And again, this is for our surveillance video you're talking about.
Yes, yep, video surveillance district-wide.
All righty. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
President Burton? Matt, do we know for how long a period of time we will be able to store those images?
So, that's going to come out of some of this design work that we talked about with the Sentinel contract that we just awarded. You're obviously going to be able to maintain that minimum 30 days and then start pulling things into long-term storage from there, but that'll shake out in the design with what we're getting from Sentinel.
Does this equipment copy over itself every 30 days, or do we have to physically do something?
No, that will happen systematically based on the solutions that's designed. The cameras will dump to the server solution, store that 30 days, dump it out to the storage area network, and then based on available storage, we'll start overwriting the oldest from there.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Centers?
The 5-megapixel camera, is that considered an industry standard, or where does that fit as far as the standard? So, I think the base bit of the 1-megapixel would be a nice baseline industry standard, and you're moving up into something that's pushing into, you know, higher resolution, a little more cutting-edge. Cutting-edge is potentially not the best term to use, but you're going above industry standard based on that resolution.
Other questions or comments?
Matt, when you said a storage area network, I mean, I assume you're talking just long-term storage?
Yeah.
That's not quite as easily accessible, but it's accessible if we needed to get to it.
Exactly. The storage area network is the data storage solution that will be designed by Sentinel. And the best way to describe it perhaps is we're not talking about a bunch of servers running with their own hard disks, and we're saving things to those hard disks. You know, a storage area network is an array of multiple hard disks that are all accessible by the entire server farm, and it's smart in the way it organizes the storage. It's redundant, so you don't, if you have a drive that failed, you've got the same data on this drive that just failed over here, so you don't lose data as a result. It's high-performance, high-capacity storage. The term for it is SAN or Storage Area Network.
Okay, all righty. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Jarvis?
President Burton? I appreciate that we were able to get the upgraded equipment within this bid, because I think it'll make it less likely to become obsolete sooner.
Absolutely, absolutely true.
Any other questions or comments? All righty, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald? Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
If I could just add, before we conclude, it doesn't seem like a lot, but having this special board meeting tonight really does set us up for success for the summer. You think about the tens of millions of dollars worth of contracts that we've just awarded now in February and March, and the 11 weeks we have this summer to get most of that work done. Being able to award these contracts tonight versus after spring break makes all the difference in the world. So I really just wanted to thank you for being here tonight and all seven of you especially. You know, it's not always that you get all seven board members to a special meeting, so we really do appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
And for the benefit of those who may be in the audience here or at home, we did go through these rather quickly, but that's because the, Cressa, our owner's representative and our administration, has been working for months preparing all of these documents. The board has had at least three meetings. We start in a study session on these topics. We go into a detailed committee of the whole meeting before it comes to a voting meeting. So the reason that you may not have seen a lot of question and answer going on tonight is because we had a ton of question and answer that happened in the meetings that led up to tonight, so, which is the case with everything that we vote on, but it certainly is with all of our bond issue. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. The last item on our agenda tonight is the second reading of Board Policy JCEC Bullying Prevention. May I have a motion?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt Board Policy language per the attached document for the following. Board Policy JCEC Bullying Prevention.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Demann, would you like to address this item?
I can, thank you. Good evening. This particular board policy is a change to one that we already had that had to do with bully prevention. And back in 2014, the legislature in Michigan added the word cyberbullying, not just electronic. Therefore, that had to be clarified within the board policy. And you'll see two different areas where it actually defines what cyberbullying is and the steps that we must take. They also, at that point, changed the name of the law from Matt's Law to Matt Epling School, Safe School Law. Those were the changes that were made to the Board of, to this policy.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions by board members on this policy? Alrighty, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That is the last item on our agenda this evening. At this time, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.